All rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
Bill?
There's a seat right here.
There's also a seat here.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
I was curious, the D C E D grant money that's being distributed, is that under the C D B G?
Yes.
And that's for last, last year's grants, right?
Actually several.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a couple that are on there.
Okay, that's what I was curious on, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Unfinished business, consider approving the minutes from March 27th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider awarding the bid for Bridge 34 Project to Ryland Construction Company Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and six, three hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-sixty-three dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Any further, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. That's over, that's in Rome Township actually is where the bridge is. All right, new business, consider proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in Bradford County.
So moved.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, you're gonna read the proclamation?
Thank you. Bradford County Committee, County Commissioners Office, Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month Proclamation, April 2025. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem impacting every segment of our community, and whereas our children are our most invaluable resource and will shape the future of Pennsylvania, and whereas child abuse can have lifelong psychological, emotional, and physical consequences for victims, and whereas Bradford County Children and Youth Services is making efforts to reduce or eliminate abuse risks and to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children, and whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Now therefore, we the Commissioners of Bradford County do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank you, and I just want to say on behalf of the Commissioners, I know we're all unanimous in this, but I will tell you on behalf of us, the work that you do in our communities for our children and our families is, is phenomenal. We thank you for all that you do each and every day, and then the one thing that, you notice the pinwheels out front, they by no means represent the number of cases that are represented to the people that, that deal with us each and every day through our C Y S office. I can remember a couple of years ago, side yard was full of blue pinwheels. I'm not, you know, there's, this has to do with the children's house, and I'm not sure what the discrepancy is, is the number of pinwheels, but I can tell you the caseloads that you all handle each and every day is just unbelievable, and it's horrific quite frankly. It's sad that we have that many cases in a county like this, in a rural county, but we thank you for all that you do, we really do.
So child abuse comes in a lot of different forms, doesn't it? And you guys are at the front line, and what, people don't understand what these folks go through, what their day looks like, how tough their job is, the environments they go into, protect our children, and I know from this guy, you know, child abuse, there is no, there is no excuse, they need to go to Burlington, and I appreciate more than you guys know what, what you do on a daily basis, and I know how hard you got, well, I don't know, I know from this side how hard it is. I can only imagine, you know, what you go through, and I can tell you that echoing Commissioner Miller, we appreciate what you do more than you think we do, or more than you probably even realize, a hundred percent. Thank you.
And there are, just to be clear, not only individuals here, I think there's some spill over out into the lobby, so if you, I can't see you, but thank you as well to everybody here and out in the rotunda. I'll echo some of the remarks that I made at the SAFE presentation with the Lieutenant Governor about two weeks ago. This is really about through the hard work of our staff, breaking, breaking chains and breaking those linkages that continue from generation to generation. And I think it's really important that we put children in the best possible situations that they can be while also helping parents to, to learn better and do better. So, thank you for everything that you do.
You know, children deserve a happy childhood, don't they? And these animals that rob those children of that, and again, thank you guys for being on the front lines, it's just amazing what you do.
All right, consider approving Resolution 2025-06, certifying provision of local match for the state operating financial assistance for the Analyst Mountains Transportation Authority in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents, and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved, second. And on that, this is the annual allocation for match that we make for E M T A, which obviously provides all the services, whether it's fixed ride or share ride around the county, so it's a great opportunity and resource for our residents.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-07 to allocate a donation to Troy Borough for the Troy Bandstand Project in the amount of up to fifteen thousand, and it's a matching grant fund. It's, this is meant to renovate their bandstand in the, in the Borough Park in, in Troy Borough. So, and this comes out of our park monies from Act 13. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-08 to donate a portion of the purchase price of a K-9 vehicle to Tuana Borough for the Tuana Police Department's K-9 unit. So, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, and I believe we've got Chief Epler here with, with?
Officer Hennessy and K-9, Hades.
Let me get a picture of that after we get done, if you don't mind. But if you want, just tell us a little bit about.
Yes, please. So Hades is a seven-year-old Belgian Malinois, he came over from Poland, 2019. He's our third police dog here in Tuana Borough. At the time, I had a canine, Edo, who was having seizures, and they were unable to figure out what was going on with his seizures. He was nine and a half, so he was still working, but he's having seizures, so we ended up getting taken on Hades onboard. He's a narcotics, he's training narcotics, tracking and article searches, evidence searches. We patrol the borough, we do a lot of stuff, like we go to the county jail, do sweeps for the county jail, we do sweeps for other school districts, anybody that will, will call, can call me, and we've done Canton Borough, Athens sweeps northeast in the past. We do occasional sweeps through the Tuana School District at random, and then we always do their sweeps for their trips, just to make sure everybody's safe and no one's bringing in anything that they have. And then on top of those responsibilities, we do a lot of public service and public relations, try to do a lot of stuff with 4H, there's a lady I got that I talked to there, I talked to her 4H group before, girl scout presentations, boy scout presentations. Do a lot with the kids, because the dog was a good bridge, you know, they may be afraid of the policeman, but not afraid of the dog, so we come to the dog. So we do a lot of presentations, do the touch of truck events where they can come and see the patrol car, because my car is set up differently than a normal patrol car, because he's in the back, and then we do what they call sixty-fourty splits, so sixty percent is the dog, the other forty is a barricade, it's for a prisoner if I had to transport someone, that way they're not mingling amongst each other. So my car's set up differently, so it's nice to talk about my car and the safety features that it has, like a hot pop and a temperature gauge and different things that other cars don't have, and then different responsibilities that I have compared to other police officers, so it's nice to see the kids can see and come sit right in the vehicles, and you know, that's always funny, because they always sit in the, you know, kids always want to sit where the bad guys go, get the picture taken, so it's always funny for that. So we do a lot of career days, we do a lot of vehicular, Tuana does a vehicular career day where they come and again, just talk about the vehicle, so we do a lot, we're very active in the public from the policing side and also from the community side.
If I may ask a question for clarification, Officer Hennessy, my understanding is that, is this the only K-9 officer that we have presently in the county that is regularly in the county, meaning if there's a need to track, that's our first line of defense, right?
Correct, yes, we're the only active police, municipal police dog obtained, municipal, yes, state police have dogs and a backup.
But if they call them, it's gonna take some time to get here.
Right, yeah, the nearest dog, police dog, municipal police dog to us is Tuncanic. The Tuncanic Township has a police dog down there that I, that I need trained in the same training group that I have. So Pennsylvania has standards, MoPAC, Municipal Police Officers Education Training Commission, changed these standards a few years ago, so that way everybody's standardized across the board in Pennsylvania, they didn't have a standardization, so we train, I train down with a Penta working group, and there's like Scranton, we'll spread a lot of guys down there that have dogs, but for me, that's my closest group, is them to train with, and then it's Tuncan Township officers from those two.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Let's thank Joe Saren, I mean, you brought this to our attention, and you guys also work with our Drug Task Force, correct?
Yes.
And now we appreciate that, and we, you know, we appreciate you guys putting your eyes on the line to cleaning drugs up off our streets, and ten times out of ten, that's why people go to jail, drug abuse. And then maybe you guys could talk a little bit about, you know, why, what we're doing is a matching fund and the cost of the, the car, Chief, maybe you could tell us, it's pretty, pretty amazing what this car can do and what's gonna be in it.
Well, the car we're replacing is a 2012 Chevy Tahoe, it's seen better days, and we're replacing that with a 2025 Tahoe, that is still on order, and we're waiting for it to come in, but it will be a fully capable patrol car as well as especially set up as a K-9 vehicle to handle the, handle the dog, and it's specifically set up so that if it's involved in a crash, the dog is safe. Some people say, well, why would you put it in the backseat the way I put my dog in the backseat? Well, it's not safe for a dog, because he, that dog becomes a projectile inside the car. The car will be fully mission capable, and a nice addition to the, to the PD, and like I say, available for the entire county.
Appreciate what you do.
Yep.
The total cost of the car is almost a hundred thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, it's ninety, ninety-three thousand is the quoted price for where we have it set up, but we have to add, yet add computers and camera system in that car, so it's, it will be scratching a hundred thousand dollars.
So we have the Mayor of Sear here as well, and we work with your police department as well, and we appreciate what you guys do throughout the county. And one of the things that I learned, I mean, the beautiful thing about what you do, you go throughout the county, everywhere, it seems as though that the drugs find their way into the burrows from, from outside. You guys, I know you have your hands full, and I sure appreciate what you do. Mayor Farley, you guys have your hands full there as well.
Nobody knows what the police in Bradford County go through.
No.
They are some of the strongest people that I have ever met, and it's amazing what they deal with every day. Anybody that criticizes our police need to move someplace else, because we have the best.
Exactly.
Hands are breaking the law, maybe we can help them move someplace else, like the state penitentiary.
Right.
One of the beautiful things about Bradford County is we enjoy a very good police-citizen relationship. You know, when bad things were going on years ago, and they were talking about crazy things like defund the police and get rid of them and all that stuff, we had zero of that here. You know, people reach out and say like, you know, anything that we can do for you, all that stuff, so we have fantastic support. We have, have no complaints where we live, and we enjoy our residents.
People want to live in safe communities.
Yes.
They really do, and we thank you for providing that safety to us.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, all right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-09, authorizing a modification to the fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Program funded by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion?
So if I can just, can I try to recap my understanding of what's happening here?
Liz is back there too.
Okay, super. Liz, oh. All right, so my understanding is, is there, you know, there's two allocations, one comes to the county, one goes through Searborough. As to Searborough, there's a move from the home rehab project of about eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-one, that's then gonna get moved to fifty-five thousand for their slum and blight project, and about thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-one for the ADA crosswalk improvements.
Yes.
And then on the county side, we're taking, we would, if we approve this, it would be a hundred twenty-five thousand ninety-four dollars going from what was gonna be the rehab at the Salvation Army, to then go ten thousand dollar increase to Meals and Wheels, a ten thousand dollar increase to the Monroe Borough Blighted Housing Demo Project, eighty-five thousand of new money to Children's House for their foundation and entrance repairs, and then twenty thousand ninety-four dollars to Bradford County Housing Rehab, and that's new money.
Yes.
Okay, did I adequately describe it? Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Consider approving a sub-reception agreement between Bradford County and Athens Borough for D C E D funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Consider approving sub-reception agreement between Bradford County and the Home Textile Tool Museum for D C E D funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving sub-reception agreement between Bradford County and Supporting Area Families Every Day or the SAFE Program for D C E D funds in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Barry Enterprises for carpet cleaning at the Bradford County Public Safety Center in the amount of two thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents, and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved, second, and again, this is for like a deep clean of the carpet?
This is a one-time deep clean, yes, the entire building.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise requests for proposals for landscape services for county properties.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Avanco International effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So moved, second, endeavor, this is for the C W I S interface and upgrades to speak, so that our system speaks relative to the child accounting and profile system, so these are required upgrades, right?
All right, we have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving the reappointment of Sarah Gates to the Bradford Sullivan County's M H I D Advisory Board for a three-year term ending February 28th, 2028.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
My abstention is noted.
Yeah. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, consider approving the memorandum of understanding between Bradford Sullivan Mental Health and the following providers effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and names per the agenda, which are all the school districts in the county.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? And this is just for caseworker support in the school districts, correct?
And my understanding is, between this M O U and the next two agenda items, it covers things like the Too Good For Drugs Program, Student Assistance Program, School-Based Outreach Services Program, and the Child and Adolescent Outreach Program, is that correct?
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Consider approving the letter of agreement between Bradford Sullivan Mental Health and the following providers effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Consider approving the letter of agreement between Bradford Sullivan Drug and Alcohol S C A and the following providers effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you unanimously. Consider approving the hires and transfers from Travis St. Clair down through and including Susan Latimer.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Under other, Christopher Bataglia has been appointed in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas to the position of Administrative Clerk III for the Court of Common Pleas in the Office of Magisterial District Court 42-3-01 effective April 7th, 2025, and that is the Magisterial District Court over in Troy. Now, Matt Williams is gonna give a report on achieving the gold standard for the BEAD application for the fiber projects.
Yes, thank you. So about a year ago, the state rolled out a program called Broadband Ready Communities, and that was in advance of the BEAD grant program, which was, which was designed to get service to the remaining unserved and underserved locations in Bradford County and across essentially the whole country. The intent of that program was to designate a local champion, which the Commissioners did, to the Progress Authority, and that champion was responsible for coordinating with municipalities and municipal governments to allow them to review their local ordinances, identify any pitfalls that may exist, street cutting, aerial hanging, zoning, anything like that that might preclude an internet service provider from located within their jurisdiction or may spill down the project. So as part of the program, what the state wanted in advance of BEAD was to make sure that when the fund hit the street, that the providers could install service and extend service to the last mile location as quickly as possible. And in the initial program, there were levels created for municipal participation, gold, silver, and bronze, anything above eighty-five percent was considered a gold county. The state did revise that language a little bit, but as of March, the March 31st deadline, we are the only county in the Commonwealth that achieved a hundred percent participation in that program. So all fifty-one of our municipalities chose to, to review their ordinance and participate, and I think it, it's a testament not only to the fact that our municipalities understand the plight of the residents and the poor internet service that has existed here for, for far too long, but also that they're invested in making sure that we can do everything possible to allow for that service extension to the last mile locations. So kudos to the Commissioners for assisting us with that outreach, kudos absolutely to our municipal governments to pass those resolutions and ensure that when the BEAD funds are finally released, which we hope will be soon, that we are ready to go and solve this real once and for all.
So having gold standard, I mean, that's amazing that we're the only county in the state, but reaching the gold standard, does that help us?
So as part of the BEAD requirements, there was a local participation, local coordination, scoring criteria within the scoring rubric for the program, and that ultimately is four points of the scoring criteria, which could ultimately make the difference on receiving funding for it. So we are hopeful that our application that was submitted in coordination with local providers to address the remaining locations in Bradford County, you know, sixty-five million dollar application is no small ask, but this will finally solve the internet problem for our citizens, and it does spill over into adjacent counties. And the very good thing about BEAD and the way that it was structured in this round was it allowed existing infrastructure to be capitalized as match, which means that the investment that the Commissioners have, have been making in the dark fiber rings that are in process of being installed roughly four hundred miles of that network exists, were eligible as match components to the application. In prior funding rounds in the BIP and the RDO programs, the money went to Frontier and Verizon and Comcast because they were able to do that in those applications. We were finally able to do that with what we had. So we do feel that we have a very competitive application, and, you know, once the dam does break at the federal level, I know N T I A, the Chairman of N T I A is pending Senate confirmation, moved out of committee yesterday, hopefully will be approved by the end of the week, and hopefully that is when the funds will actually hit the ground.
Are there any other rural counties in Pennsylvania as advanced as we are in Kansas?
There are none. There are, there are other areas within the Commonwealth that we are aware, we are aware of that submitted BEAD applications. We did a lot of coordination with various agencies, including the University of Pittsburgh Data Center, the Pennsylvania Broadband Authority, we worked with the Vettan Institute out of Washington, D.C. to make sure that we had a very strong application. And the gentleman at University of Pittsburgh, whose name is Adil Janwala, was the Chief of Staff at N T I A when BEAD was developed, and he's looked at these all over the country and said that we are literally miles and miles and miles ahead of most other rural counties, not only in Pennsylvania, but the country.
I've always felt that it, we got punished for being miles and miles and miles ahead, so I hope this one, this one program that could actually mean something. Now, this is federal money to the state, the state's distributing.
Correct, yeah, each state had to submit a plan to N T I A. N T I A approved their Volume 1 and Volume 2 proposals. They are currently, Pennsylvania is in the sub-consultant selection, so that is what we had applied for. And so what will happen now is the state will score those applications, ensure that all of the identified locations are included, up to ninety-five percent, unless they were not cost feasible to extend service to. They will submit that final proposal to N T I A, who will ultimately say, okay, Pennsylvania, we agree with your plan, here's your money, and a lot of the contractors go away.
So just on that, so the, I'm sorry, go ahead Commissioner.
I'm sorry, just a couple more questions if I could. So are our state elects fighting for us, I mean, I don't hear from them, and they don't come to our meetings or anything like that, but are they out there in the trenches fighting for us to get that funding?
The state legislators, you mean? Absolutely, yes, we, we are very closely coordinated with all of the representatives in our, in our districts. So Rep Allen, Rep Pickett, Senator Goff, and then when we did spill over into other areas and just, so we did, we, our application includes locations in each contiguous county, and primarily for us, it was strategic to make sure that we can make redundancy in our network so that it would reduce downtime.
One other quick question if I could. So BEAD money is awarded, is that gonna put a shortage on glass and fiber?
We hope not, I mean, it, with, with what's going on with some of the markets, I guess there's that potential, but a lot of the providers, AFL is where we get our fiber, they have made investments in advance of BEAD to make sure that they were able to.
Okay, good, thank you.
So mechanically, I just want to understand, the BEAD, you will at some point, hopefully in the near future, obtain, and we're hoping a favorable determination, and that's a preliminary determination saying the Pennsylvania Broadband Development Authority agrees it's a meritorious project in whatever broadband service areas they're awarding it to you. That then is what goes up, they essentially funnel it up to N T I A at the federal level for final approval.
Correct.
So when will you, do you have a sense of when the BEAD preliminary approval might be?
So I think everybody at this point is waiting to see what happens at the federal level. There has been a, a. There has been a push at the federal level to remove some of the extraneous language that was included by the prior administration, specifically technology neutral, but the other things that are a cost barrier that were included in the proposal, double prevailing wage and some of the environmental permitting regulations. So I know that the Department of Commerce and N T I are looking to see how they can reduce the impact on those. I don't know if anybody tracked, but Rep. Pickett and some co-sponsors did introduce a bill into the Pennsylvania Legislature to establish prevailing wage rates for telecommunications workers. In our application, because of the way the labor industry and P A prevailing rate works, we had to use the electric utility lineman's prevailing wage rate, which was roughly $100 an hour, when the going rate for a fiber contractor is half of that. So you know, it equates roughly 60% of the application cost. It wasn't exclusive to us. Everybody was playing by the same rulebook, but it did create an inflationary cost. And I think hopefully that that is one of the things that the feds are looking at, and the state is obviously looking at it, to make sure that we can stretch that money as far as we can to make sure that every last person has access to high-speed internet who desires it.
Again, thank you to all of our municipalities.
Great job. Yep, thank you. Mayor Farley, that's Mayor America 250.
Yes, I'm here. First, I want to report that all of our historic markers have been returned to Bradford County, painted, holes are all straightened and fixed. I made a trip to Tina Pickett's office, and they made some phone calls, and everything's back in a good shape, so.
Good.
Won't be three years like it was the last time. Okay, we have seven months till the kickoff, right, in November 28th. We're going to kick off America 250 Bradford County at the Sarah Christmas Parade, so got to start really revving up for that. We have 16 people participating in our committee right now, and I have to say they're an energized group of people from across the county, and they're excited to be there, and we're doing exciting things. Our Facebook page is up and running. The Liberty Tree has buds on it, so I didn't kill it.
Those are really?
Yep, I went over and looked at it the other day, and so I thought, thank God, it made it through the winter, so I just got to keep it going. The fireworks are as planned. The Revolutionary War plaque, Cindy Holdridge has gathered information to fill eight binders of Revolutionary War veterans from Bradford County. She's doing an amazing job of collecting all the data on these folks, and she's going everywhere. She's got about five people that are working with her, helping her collect stuff. She expects a new plaque that will be dedicated on Memorial Day, 2026, to have 300 names on it. So that'll be 300 people that came to Bradford County and settled after the Revolutionary War that are buried here, and we've never recognized them, so we'll be doing that in the plaque in the courthouse for America 250. The Historic Marker booklet is underway. Matt's been working on that. Liberty Bell Project, we're still working on that. Kane Chamberlain has a lead on an artist, and he's working with that person right now to firm something up, so we'll keep people posted what's going on with that. The school reading program, that's the ABCs of Pennsylvania, which we did at Austin Snyder School a few years ago. We want to do that across the county, and we are, we have that underway. Robin Chamberlain is helping us coordinate that. Publicity will be applying for some tourism money for that. We still, the commissioner's commemorative, we have the design for that, so you guys are going to have to make a decision how many you want to order of that and stuff. Sarah Public Library has, for all the libraries, there's a new juvenile fiction book. It's The Rebellion of 1776, and they're proposing that we do a community re-project in the libraries for the kids with that book for information about that type. Historic portrayals, we're working on that. Janine Guliasa from Senator Yaw's office is helping us with that. Mike Noon right now has volunteered to portray Etenay Brulé, who was the first white man to set foot in what is now Pennsylvania, at Spanish Hill in 1615. And I don't know if you know Mike or not, but he's a character actor, and he puts himself into the role. He becomes that person. He drives you crazy trying to find out information about them, but he's actually that person when he's doing it.
Nice, yeah.
So it'll be really cool, whatever he comes up with. The William Salisbury Walking Stick, Nate Schoonover has located the stick. It's in a museum in Philadelphia that's controlled by the Daughters of the American Revolution. So Cindy Holdridge called the head of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and she got referred to the National Park Association. So we're either going to get the stick, or we're going to be making a copy of it, whichever they'll let us do. And then Nate has walkers lined up to go from Philadelphia to Bradford County with the stick, so that'll be another event that we do. Community concert series, we're asking all communities that do summer concerts to do at least one patriotic concert during 2026. I know that Sarah Burroughs is planning to have the United States Military Band for one of theirs, so things like that will be interesting. Reenactments are going to be done by French Asylum. They'll be hosting Revolutionary War reenactments in the summer of 2026. And here's the coolest thing that's going on right now, the Sullivan's March video. And I don't know if you folks know Steve Berwick or not, he's an emergency management person at Memorial Hospital, but he's also a videographer, and he's amazing. He lives down around Camp Town. He is working on a video that is going to be from Wylusing to Fort Sullivan up the river, and he's going to tell the story of Sullivan's March, which is, it's an absolutely amazing story.
Yeah, it is.
Of coming up the river, and he will do an amazing job. So what we want to do with that is like roll it out first at maybe the comm center, you know, we'll show it there, and then show it to different groups across the county so that we can do private showings with it and the public showings with it, and then eventually put it on YouTube. At the beginning, we want to do showings to educate people across the county, because it will be a first-class piece of work when he's done with it. He's already been up at the Crest in North Tawanda to interview the guy up there. I don't know if you know that there is a historic marker right past Crystal Springs. You can go up that road to the old highway, and there's a historic marker up there that talks about Breakneck Hill.
Around the old, on the old highway?
Yeah, and Breakneck Hill is across the river at the end of James Street Bridge, but that's where they stood and watched people coming across. The horses went over the mountain coming up with Sullivan's March, and some of them dropped right off into the river because it was so steep there. So there's just great things, and he's getting into all that stuff, so it'll be a great, great video when he's done with it. The Heritage Region is planning on doing a canoe paddle up the river, so that'll coincide with the video in the Sullivan's March. We'll be having Bradford County History Day here at the courthouse on July 4, and that's going to be, we're asking all the museums and groups to come in and set up in the courthouse, and then we will have the fireworks that night. We also will have throughout the whole year, 52 display panels throughout the courthouse on easels of each town and township that tell the little snippets of their history. So that'll be on display in the courthouse for the whole year. Financial support, we have been hand-delivering some fundraising letters. Robin Cummings has been sending them out to people that she knows, and we're going to be doing a mailing, so we're hopefully even can raise enough money for that. And Mary Lou Palmer from Friendship Star Quilt and Sare has volunteered to head up a project to do a semi-quinsentennial quilt. We'll get quilters from across the county to do squares. We want to impose photos of some of the early settlers and events and things on it, do a quilt that we can put on display across the county. Part of Wylusing Museum's contribution to the America 250 will be there in a quilt show, but it will be a patriotic theme. What we thought we'd do was sell raffle tickets on that quilt all summer long and then raffle it off at the Wylusing Quilt Show that day. So everybody's going to have a piece of the action here, and we want to just conclude the whole county with everything we do. The character actors that we get, we will take across the county, any place that we'll have them to do the portrayals of people that were prominent in Sullivan Bradford County. And then I will be participating in a Zoom meeting for Region Four of America 250. We finally have a representative again on April 24, so I may have new direction from them after that, I'm not sure, but we will start to share with them what we're doing. We've been hesitant to tell them everything we're planning because we don't want them copying us, so we want to be the first for some of these things.
There you go. So that's a great idea to use a comm center for Sullivan's, for that video, because there's plenty of parking. If nobody's been to the comm center, I don't know. Sorry to interrupt. Then we have, thank you. We have, you know, there's video walls up there. I mean, it'd be just outstanding. One of the things I approached Mayor Farley on is I would love to do an evening with he and Matt Carl, and maybe this would be a great time to do that, too. The summer would be to have you guys present, you know, what Bradford County looked like and.
Yeah, we could do a lead-in.
A lead-in, and then also take question and answers. People don't realize, this man, how much wealth is a treasure chest of knowledge he has on our county. He comes up with new stuff, so stay tuned for that if he agrees to do it. Plenty of parking. I think we can only put about 150 chairs in there, is that correct?
Something like that.
So it'd be, you probably have to do an R S V P or first come, first served.
Or perhaps we could do multiple showing.
We could do that, too. That would be, it would be tremendous, and I appreciate you considering doing it. Another thing that people could do is, an author that I absolutely love is David McCullough, and you can go on YouTube and to get yourself, to get a better understanding of what these men and women went through for, to give us freedom in the Revolutionary War, he does lectures, and it's all done, it's not done by his opinion. He goes, he studies, his books take years to do, but he does letters and war journals and newspaper articles, so when you listen to him, you know, it's all factual. And there's a, there's a bunch of stuff on there that'll give you an idea of what, what these people went through from us. I think Abigail Adams said that, you know, the future generations will never know the sacrifices that we did back then, and boy, is that ever true. Plenty of, just a couple of things. Thank you very much for all you're doing, and this is terrific.
Well, I think that the folks that are stepping up to the plate to help, because we really have some great people that are energized, and they're leaving those meetings feeling excited, which, you know, they're not feeling like they're bogged down with all kinds of things they have to do, because everybody's taking this part.
Incredible importance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. All right, Salary Board. I think Matt Allen was out there. Matt Allen, our treasurer's.
Smell flowers.
Member of the Salary Board, there's no unfinished business?
I'd like to register a sunshine act violation.
So noted.
Thank you.
No unfinished business. New business, set the salaries and grades from Travis St. Clair down through and including Christopher Bataglia.
Make that motion for the agenda.
A second. You have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Moving on, we'll move to Assessment Board. There is no unfinished business?
I'd like to register a sunshine act violation.
So noted.
Comment. Thank you.
New business, consider approving the following for tax exemptions. One is Dale Palmer. It is a new tax exemption. Probably, I'm sure it's a veteran's exemption. And David Spencer, again, tax exemption, veteran's exemption.
So moved.
You have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Visitors' comments. George had to leave, so we're on Hugh Austin.
So commissioners were.
Okay, go ahead.
What are you hiding? At the March 13 meeting, you said the answer to the legality of the resolution dissolving the B C L board would be provided. To date, it has not. What are you hiding? On March 19, I wrote a letter to Solicitor Foster requesting a legal reasoning for the action at the March 13 meeting, where the resolution dissolving the board was passed. I put the letter in the local delivery slot inside the Tawanda Post Office to ensure it would be delivered promptly. I have not received an answer to my letter. What is he hiding? At the Commissioners' March 27 meeting, you were asked again to provide the legal reasoning allowing for you to dissolve the board, as was said to have been discussed with the county solicitor prior to the public vote on the resolution. You did not answer the question. What are you hiding? As your constituents, we have every right to answers regarding the decisions made by you. What are you hiding? Why will you not respond to the questions? Why has the solicitor not responded to a written request on this subject? What is he hiding on your behalf? When the commissioners take an action that affects the community, the community has the right to know that the legal foundation for that action is sound. There is an expectation to receive answers. Again, I ask, what are you hiding?
Thank you. Walt Woods.
I was curious of when the application process for the C D B grants start for this year, and what organizations have to do to take care of that. How can organizations come forward for Act 13 funding if they want anything? I saw the bandstand today and other times, but you never really mentioned how organizations can come forward. The, I was curious on the landscaping services. Is that something new, or is it a continuation of something that's been done previously? Are you guys doing extensive landscaping compared to previous work, or something new? And Commissioner Miller, you had said last time that my question on the letter about the right to know has already been answered. That's not true. You guys have never answered that question. The state has made a presumption based off of things that were said, but they were just No answer in any legal filing or anything with the state or myself or the other requester has been done, and we, quite a few of us would like to know how a letter was sent that you claim under oath that was sent, especially since it's about the L A C documents that you have claimed were destroyed back in the beginning of 2014, but still existed in November of 2014. And now you're claiming again that they have been destroyed with no explanation of what happened in the meantime. Some answers would be great.
All right, thank you. George Dunn.
I'm from the Tawanda Salvation Army, and I just wanted to get out there that we offer a free camp at that Camp La Door down in Waymore, P A. It's for seven to 12-year-old kids. You just go on campla door dot org and fill out, enroll your child and fill out the forms necessary, so I can enroll them and get them to have a good summer. It's June 30 to July 4. They will be doing like a July 4 celebration. Obviously, they come home on the 4th, so it'll be a little bit early, but they do all friends and stuff down there, and they actually meet everybody. Like, there's people from Ireland, across the pond, and the U K. We have everybody. I think there was a Turkish person there last year. The camp hosters are awesome. It's an amazing camp, and it's free. You just have to take your child to the old Kmart parking lot. We ship them down, we bring them back, and meet you guys back at the old Kmart parking lot Friday. And it's a week-long, well, not more than a week, but it's a week-long overnight camp.
So they go down on a Greyhound, on a Greyhound bus?
No, they, we go down on a regular school bus now.
School bus.
Heather Pepper transports us down to Waymore. We make it fun for the kids on the way down. On the way back up here, they're out. They're like, they talk about it for about 20 minutes, and then next thing you know, they're passed out because they had so much fun and.
Yeah, my point was is that they take them down together.
Yep.
Safe environment.
Yes.
There's no income levels. This is for all children.
Yep, all children. Doesn't matter who.
Camp La Door, I think it's about 800 acres, so.
It's tall.
It's huge.
It's huge.
It's got a huge lake. It used to be a carnival or a amusement park in there at one time. But yeah, if your kids have any desire to go, I've been down, it's terrific, and they're well, the kids are well-supervised, very safe. They stay in like pods.
Yep, there's free, I think, on like camps.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you. All right, press inquiries. James.
How much are you donating for the K-9 vehicle?
$25,000.
And then where does that come from?
Act 13, public safety portion of the funds.
So there, in other words, the state has said that you have to use some of these Act 13 funds for public safety purposes, and you're taking.
It's one of the 13, it's one of the 13 categories. Yep, it's one of the 13, it's one of the 13 categories.
So the state doesn't specify of the 13 qualified categories, how much you have to spend in each. But this is, public safety is one of the 13 designated usage of Act 13 money.
Okay. And then as far as those, you approved subrecipient agreements with Athens Borough, the Home Textile Tool Museum and the Supporting Area Families every day for DCED funds. Those are, those are all CDBG funds, actually?
Elizabeth can answer that, yeah.
Yep, so those are from previous year's funding that was awarded in 2022, I believe that year is. And this is just in order to move those projects forward, we're creating the agreements between the county and residents.
Okay. And then Sarah Gates, that's your wife, right?
That's correct, and that's why I abstained.
Okay. I think that's, that's everything. Oh, also, I want to, do you have any, Mr. Williams, do you have any, any like updated information, I guess, on whether the Trump Administration is going to scuttle your, your application for, as far as your applications for private to the home and they, they, they want to be able to use internet, at least satellite internet, at least the kind that Starlink. So I didn't know if you see the 65 million dollar application being reworked by the federal government so that you can no longer bring fiber to the home with those funds, but would have to use Starlink.
Can I just answer that?
Yeah, pending at the federal level.
Yes. So we did that through public safety. And you've got to have fiber run to all of our towers, correct? They need fiber to operate efficiently. And that's where the county stepped in. And, you know, back when Zachary, you know, went through the PUC to get the approval to do all the, I mean, this has been a ton of work over the years. And but that, you know, the satellite certainly has a place in the world, but, but we need the glass run to the towers and it's got to be hardwired in. So.
Yeah, James, the answer to that question is the push has not been to remove the fiber language. It has been to make it technology neutral.
Oh, really?
And the hearings that we sat in on, the individual that's up for the chairman of NTIA, you know, repeatedly said that she thinks a discretion is at the state level. The states need to determine what's best for their constituents. And obviously, as Commissioner McGo said, in the most remote locations, satellite is certainly an option.
It's kind of an all of the above approach, is really what's. Our goal is for everybody to get internet, no matter how it comes, period.
So, okay, I appreciate it. So hopefully, if that, that way, if that person who's, who's is confirmed as NTIA director, hopefully they, their point of view is going to be, that it should be at the state's discretion, that that's going to, that would hold, hopefully.
We, we're hopeful that that will be.
Okay, that's everything.
All right, Phil.
How much was that Troy Burrow bandstand donation?
15,000, up to 15,000. It was a matching grant. They're, they're doing fundraising over there. So it's up to a threshold of 15,000.
So we got it.
All right. Motion to adjourn. I got one thing. So on April 22nd, 10:30 at the comm center, Governor Corbett's going to be in town. So we're going to do a, a kind of like, we're going to kind of honoring and show him, if it wasn't for Governor Corbett, there would be no impact fee. I traveled all over the country, to all over different counties, to all over different elected officials. What he did in Pennsylvania is second to none anywhere. Even in Texas, my friends down there don't see the revenue back to the county that through Governor Corbett, what he did. He was the man for the job to the beginning of Marcel's shale period. And what he did for our counties is nobody, we take it for granted, don't take it for granted. But it's, we hope to get it there. I hope you'd come. We're going to have a, it's, by the way, this is political neutral. We, when we give funds out, it goes to, it goes to everybody. Democrats, Republicans, independents, everybody. I think we made a conscientious decision early on that all impact fee money would be to the benefit of every resident of Bradford County. And we've tried to do that over the years. So that way, yes, money will go to like the beautiful bandstand in Sarah, Troy, or what have you. But we, you know, but we try to move it around. It's Dark Fiber Project, Comm Center. So it's going to, and Dwayne's working very hard on this with our girls here. Be kind of a slideshow to show the governor what, what that he did has meant to this county. And right now, I think that, you know, we're, we'll show you how much, how many millions of dollars county government works, you know, with the big projects. We're not going to get into the weeds of the small stuff, but the big projects. And then Matt's going to get how much has gone to all the municipalities. And for the press, we have limited seating, but we'd love to see some supervisors come. Because whether it's a lot or a little, you wouldn't be getting it without Governor Corbett, period. So we hope to see on the 22nd, especially the press. And Dwayne's going to have a pretty cool, and there'll be lunch served as well. To, to the point of all citizens in Bradford County, what the lion's share of that money has gone to infrastructural improvements. Bridges, roofs, buildings. And that's.
56 billion.
Yeah. And what that's done is that pays dividends for generations to come that we don't have to go out and borrow money or leverage other funds somehow or another to be able to facilitate rebuilding infrastructure that was desperately needed to have been rebuilt. So that's where the lion's share of that money has gone. Yeah. When you said roofs, it's a roof here. It's just under $4 million. Well, guess what? Without, that needed to be done. I mean, that roof was shot. It was leaky. And without that, we'd be going to the taxpayers. Without the bridge bundle projects, we'd be going, they'd have to go to the taxpayers. You know, the comm center was horrible shape. You know, we got flooded downstairs, terrible. You know, we've given, I think about $4 million for our first responders, just under that this year. And then, you know, it's just incredible what that money's been used for. And again, you know, it's lightening the load on a taxpayer. So it's just a, it's incredible. We got to make sure we fight to keep that funding for, for rural Pennsylvania.
So I just want to address some questions that were raised during public comment. And then I have a statement to read. So first of all, following up on Act 13, requests usually come to us in the form of a letter from individuals who are seeking some type of assistance. And then if we can assist them utilizing Act 13, then we take that up, obviously, in a public meeting. So that's, that's number one. Number two, application for CDBG. Elizabeth can provide that information after the meeting. Landscaping Services, we got something we do, have done in past years, but Michelle Shutton, who is not here today, she can provide the clarity on that.
It's been done before. It's, it's an ongoing project.
So April 19th, 2025 will mark the 250th anniversary of the battles of Lexington and Concord, the first major military campaigns of the American Revolutionary War. Henry Wadsworth Longfellow's poem, Paul Revere's Ride, details the night before April 18th, 1775. It was first published on December 20th, 1860, which ironically was the same day that South Carolina voted to secede from the Union. I think it's important to read the last stanza. Many people know the, the first stanza, or at least portions of the first stanza of the poem, but the last one is important. "So through the night," wrote Paul Revere, "and so through the night went his cry of alarm to every middlesex village or farm, a cry of defiance and not of fear, a voice in the darkness, a knock at the door, and a word that shall echo forevermore. For born on the night wind of the past, through all our history to the last, in the hour of darkness and peril and need, the people will awaken and listen to hear the hurrying hoofbeats of that steed and the midnight message of Paul Revere. May we never forget the battles fought against tyranny and oppression by those who came before us, to forge out of many one a more perfect union of which we can be proud." And I know that America 250 is going to be doing that. And just, let's all remember those words by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow.
Yeah, to add, as you folks know, that George Washington was eight years of the Revolutionary War. He never took one dime of pay. Did you know that? It's incredible what these people did for us. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you very much.